Good evening, today is Wednesday, June 24th, 2015. We are convening for the meeting of the Board of Education of St. Mary's County. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
I move the board enter into executive session for the purpose of personnel, collective bargaining or legal, property acquisition issues and student issues under Maryland Local Government Code, Article Section 9-512A, 1, 2, 6 and 10.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's go on one in. We will now reconvene with our open meeting and let us all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll have the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so now we're gonna start with board reports. As you can see, we're a smaller group today. Two of our board members are on vacation, so they're having a good time. Alright, so go ahead, Sarita.
Thank you. So tonight I'm going to be giving an update about the conference that I'm going to be attending in July. So this is the annual conference for the National Association of City and County Health Officers. It's the major public health conference for city and county health departments. Just to show you that it really is the major one. Thomas Frieden, the director of the CDC, will be introducing the conference and then Vivek Murthy, of course, our surgeon general, will be giving that keynote address, so hopefully I will meet them. That'd be awesome. For this conference, I will be presenting information about our 2015 Youth Drug Prevention Summit from this past spring. It was accepted as a poster presentation upon my submitting it as submitting an abstract about it this past couple of months. So in the exhibit halls during those times during the conference when there's time to walk around and see the poster presentations, then I will be presenting that to those who walk around and ask me about it. And so that is what I've been working on for the past few weeks with the help of Dr. Rooster and also Mr. Wyatt. What I hope to gain from this conference in July is to, again, share that summit and everything that we did with other health officers and people in public health and be able to be a point of contact for them for youth drug prevention in the public health Since it will be the whole public health community, I hope to also gain advice and more ideas from them for the next steps that I take next year or we take that I can bring back to share with the community for next year. So after attending the conference, I plan to give another update to the board on my experience and use what I learned as we address drug misuse this upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you. This past week, I attended the Maryland State Envirothon, our very own Great Mills High School, which had won for the county, was representative for St. Mary's County. It was held at St. Mary's College, so it was close. I did help out. I ran around and got things for the judges and took pictures and it was tough competition between first and second place, there was one point. Great Mills High School placed eighth, which was fantastic out of the whole state. They had to do things such as like identifying trees, which trees would they go ahead and take down if they were foresting it, identifying fish and different animals and the soil, how to identify the soil, what the pH was. So they were, they got eighth, but they were just a few points right behind first place, so they did a fantastic job. When, I think it was Wednesday and Thursday, I believe, of last week. So on Wednesday evening, they went out to plant an oyster bed and I had the opportunity to go out with them on the barge to watch them, you know, go ahead and do that. They had other activities for the students too, such as throwing out the net and seeing what kind of critters they could find in the water there. So I think a good time was had by all and I think they learned a lot and I certainly had a great time.
Sounds great. So many wonderful things are happening that it's hard to choose just one thing to talk about and that's what we agreed to do, so I'm sticking to it. On June 17th, the superintendent's 2015 recognition ceremony was held at the Forest Center. It was for the Teacher of the Year recognitions, the length of service recognition and retirees recognitions. Mr. Michael Denny was the Agnes Meyer Teacher of the Year and he teaches global and international studies at Lenartown High School. Congratulations to Mr. Denny again. Also, employees who have service of 25, 30, 35, 40 and 45 years of service were tremendously applauded. Let's give him a hand. That's a tremendous number of years. Mr. Joseph Hall and Mrs. Edith Smith and Ms. Nellie Nolan were recognized for 45 years of service to St. Mary's County Public Schools. Finally, farewell and thank you was noted for our 2015 retirees. We will miss them. We hope that they enjoy their free time with family, friends and loved ones and do the things that are on their wish list. I counted 74 retirees and God bless all of them and thank them. And today at 3:00, Mr. Brad Clements, our Deputy Superintendent of Schools and Operations, will be retiring after 41 years of education service in the state of Maryland. Mr. Clements, his family came, his wife, brother, sister, God's son, he had a crowd with him. And Brad has done so much for the school system, I have enjoyed working with him. He's an honest person, he's a man of high character and integrity and he will be missed. His wife has been waiting about three years for him to retire because she has retired, so he's been spending those years getting the RV ready to go. So I hope they just have a safe time and drop us postcards from around the country so we can see what you're up to. And the school system is much better for Mr. Clements having been with us and I'm gonna miss you sorely. You're a great team player, you have just helped us to build a wonderful organization because we could not have schools if we didn't have transportation, if we didn't have food service, if we didn't have building service workers, if we didn't even have buildings for the students to go into. So he's in charge of so many things, that whole complete side of the house and he has done a tremendous job, so thank you again and let's give Mr. Clements a hand. Thank you. He is a humble man, but let everybody know, would you stand up please and your wife? And your wife. Thank you so much.
And of those employees who retired, they told us that they had collectively over 1,699 years of service to St. Mary's County Public Schools. From my board report, I wanted to talk about the fact that I attended the 5th grade promotion ceremony for Lenartown Elementary School. Lenartown is just filled beyond capacity with students waiting for the newest elementary school to open. And to that end, they had 817 students at the end of school, 138 of whom were 5th graders who promoted on to 6th grade. And it was a wonderful ceremony, very heartfelt. They held it at the school realizing that with that many students, there would certainly be many parents and well wishers who wanted to be there, but knowing that it was also important since this would be the last time such a large group was all together, they wanted to make sure that they held that ceremony at the elementary school because it had been and is such a center for the community. And so it was a wonderful ceremony and I appreciated being able to be there and be a part of it. Thank you very much. That's it.
I had the joy of also attending a 5th grade promotion ceremony for the youngest Smith, young Aiden Smith, as he is promoted from Benjamin Banneker to Lenartown Middle School. And the event was held at Chopticon High School. Mr. Bowling graciously opened the doors and it was really something. Of course, there were 5th grade promotions held throughout the county. The day before, there were 8th grade promotions held throughout the county. And two weeks before that, we graduated almost 1,300 students from our public schools. We are a community that cares about kids, that likes to share in their successes and their celebrations and we're gonna be doing that a little later today with some fantastic state award-winning athletes. But before we do that, I would like to go up and read a little something. Thank you, Mrs. Washington, for talking about the retirees and speaking specifically about Mr. Clements. And it was really a wonderful event earlier today, but we did want to make sure that we recognized him at the board meeting so it is read into the record, so it becomes really the history of St. Mary's County Public Schools. And so, Mr. Clements, if you would please, good sir, if you could join me up here so I can read this resolution and we might stand side by side. And then, just so you're prepared, I am going to step away from the mic and offer it to you, good sir. So as you hear the warm words of our resolution, be thinking of an appropriate rejoinder. Board of Education, St. Mary's County, June 24th, 2015. Whereas, Mr. Bradley J. Clements has devotedly served St. Mary's County Public Schools for over two decades, faithfully serving three superintendents and two superintendents. Whereas, throughout his career, Mr. Clements has been responsible for the construction of 19 schools, one administrative office building, one warehouse. And whereas, Mr. Clements has also been responsible for 37 major construction projects resulting in efficient school buildings, student-friendly classrooms, welcoming office spaces. And whereas, his management of staff has ensured that meaningful maintenance would be implemented so our equipment and spaces would have the most productive and useful lives. And whereas, his accomplishments are not only measured in brick and mortar, but also in programs and processes and the people he has developed and encouraged throughout his tenure. He has supported those, he has supervised, counseled well those for whom he has worked and personifies the adage, "Let your conscience be your guide." And whereas, Mr. Clements has made an impact on those around him that will never be forgotten. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognize Mr. Bradley J. Clements Deputy Superintendent of Schools and Operations for 22 years of dedicated service to St. Mary's County Public Schools and 41 total years of service to Maryland Public Schools. Signed this day, June 24th, 2015, by the members of the board and myself. Congratulations.
I just have to say that it has been a true pleasure for me over the years to work with so many great people, work with so many board members, has been a number of times. But Mrs. Allen, Mrs. Washington, you have been there almost throughout my whole time. The work that we have done together has been outstanding for students and the classroom environment. Throughout that time, our commissioners, as our commissioners today, have truly supported our schools and especially in the area of improving our schools. The work that has been done since 1993, when I started to date, is remarkable if you look at it. I mentioned earlier today that we took a look at that and it's like $315 million put into our schools. At your last meeting, you acted upon the education facilities master plan to go forward and part of that is the maintaining of those facilities over time. And that's what we need to do to keep those environments the best we can for our students. A lot has been said about me today, but it's truly about people. It's truly about all those people that work for me and as I've said today and said before, I say they don't work for me, we work together to make it happen and they're the ones that make the difference. On the support side, I think my wife today talked about the car and making the car run. We don't think about it, we get the job done. Support side tries to get the job done so our teachers can do everything they do every day. So thank you, thank you for this opportunity tonight, but the opportunity I've had for 22 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I believe we were going to be given the opportunity to speak about...
Most certainly.
Do you mind? Point of personal privilege, I suppose, or... I mean, the message went out. I'm very lucky to have worked with Brad for 18 of his 22 years here and a lot has changed during that time. He has participated in making this a much better system. When I first met him, it was I had the opportunity to serve on the Growth Management Advisory Committee and that was one that looked at the growth in the community, where schools should be built and when they should be built. But we didn't have the technology that we have today and so determining where those boundaries were meant that I crawled on the floor over at Supporting Services to draw the lines on the map so we would know where our school boundaries were. And so now today, it's all done by computer. I feel like I've been replaced by technology. He always found a way to make things happen. When a group of committed parents at Lenartown Elementary School said, you know, the '70s colors, it's now the late '90s, the '70s colors really have to go. He made it possible. Because there was not money in the budget to bring painters in, he made sure that there was someone who would oversee those committed parents as we painted the gym and we painted the cafeteria and those '70s colors went away. He also understood that all the professional development that was done for our teachers should also be extended to our support staff because just as the saying goes, it takes a village, it truly takes a village to make sure that all of our students have what they need. And so he developed the program Tomorrow's Leaders. It is the first in the state and it speaks to his belief in all the staff in the system and the importance of making sure that everyone receives professional development. He is a man of integrity, respect, extraordinary knowledge and a very calming presence. He talks the talk, but he also walks the walk. He doesn't ask anyone to do anything that he wouldn't or hasn't done himself. He spoke today of the person that he tries to model himself after, that being Walt Disney. Both are men of vision and possibilities focused on making things the best they can be. And you, someone can come into the position that Brad holds, but no one will ever replace him. So, thank you. Thanks. Now we will have, did you want to say anything?
Well, I think I jumped the gun and I said mine up front, but anyway, I can do part two if you like. But I could go on and on and talk about Brad's accolades, but I said a little about him, but I'm gonna say something about his wife. She is a very supportive wife and you can tell she truly loves her husband. So you don't have to worry anymore about getting those phone calls at 2:30 in the morning about snow days or anything else, so you know, it'll be strange with that phone not ringing, but maybe I have to call you just for fun. Anyway, have a good time, travel the country, travel the world, it's the big world, the sea, and send a postcard so we know where you are and it'll be wonderful to hear from you. So, thank you so much.
Sarita?
I would just like to take this time and say thank you for always taking the time to explain school projects as I learned about them. I truly appreciate how welcoming you always are and I admire how you work with and treat the people around you. Thank you.
And while we were at the ceremony, I spoke with Brad and once again, thank you. Alright, now we're gonna move on to some recognitions. The Maryland State Champions, we have, are we doing track and field first?
Track and field first, Dr. Roper.
Alright, so for state champions for track and field.
Good evening, Dr. Roper.
Good evening, Mr. Smith and members of the board. There are many wonderful things that come out of education-based athletics and although there is a driving goal to win, winning is not everything and sometimes what happens along the way is as important as winning. The lessons that are learned dealing with defeat, being gracious, being good sports, many wonderful things. However, when you do win, it's usually pretty darn good. And this evening, we are able to recognize students from two of our high schools that had success at the highest level in state competition. As you indicated, we'd first like to start with some athletes from Great Mills High School, participants in the track and field team. Under the direction of their coaches, the Great Mills Track and Field Team placed second in regular conference competition with a record of 11 and 1. The team placed third in the SMAC Championship Meet, sixth in the 4A Regional Meet and 14th overall in the 4A Meet. At this time, I would like to invite their coaches to come forward. Due to the fact that school is out, we realize that some people are not with us this evening and may be taking a little rest after a very, very busy season, which is understandable. But I believe we do have with us this evening Bianca Lynch and Kelsey Staff and I don't know, was Wendy here as well? Mr. Smith, would you like to join me and present certificates? Bianca is head coach and Kelsey and then Wendy who assisted. And we're gonna make you stand there now while I talk. At this time as well, before we do have the athletes come up, I'd just like to recognize that joining us this evening and supporting the coaches and the athletes, Mr. Hyboll, principal of Great Mills High School and Ms. Brenda Henley, Activities Director at the school, without their support, none of this would be possible. At this time, I'd like to invite Casimir Tawei and Cameron Yon to both come forward and join their coaches. And when they're up here, I'm gonna tell you a little bit about each of them and maybe after that, we could present the certificate just... Okay. I'll try and get my teeth around this here. We can start off with Casimir is to the right there. He was undefeated in the 100-meter hurdles during the regular season and postseason. He holds a school record for 110-meter hurdles. He won the SMAC Championship in a time of 14.6 seconds and the Regional Championship in 14.78. He went on to win the state hurdles championship in a time of 14.44 seconds. He was voted all-conference first team in the 110-meter hurdles and was named as an All-County Athlete of the Year in Boys Track and Field. He placed fifth at the region in the 200 meters, so it was not just the 100 meters in which he did very well. It was third in SMAC, eighth in the region and both of those events were, sorry, both of those were in the 4x100-meter relay. He also competed in the high jump placing sixth at the SMAC, third at the region and 15th at the state. And he received an All-Met Washington Post Honorable Mention. So Cameron, you gotta top that. Cameron, also undefeated, but this time in DISCUS in the regular season and postseason. And he also holds the school record for DISCUS. He won the SMAC Championship with a throw of 165 feet 6 inches and the Regional with 159 feet 2 inches. Went on to win the state championship with a distance of 164 feet 3 inches. He was voted to the all-conference first team in DISCUS. He also participated in the Penn Relays in DISCUS. And recently, just about a weekend ago, I believe it was, he won the Boys Emerging Elite DISCUS Competition in the New Balance National Outdoor Meet in Greensboro, North Carolina.
Wow.
He also set a meet record of 171 feet 1 inch, is that correct?
Wow.
I knew these numbers were gonna get me. But what I like about that is that, you know, he won SMAC with 165 and as he moves on, he's increasing and he's getting better all the time, which is wonderful, that's the way it works. He was All-Met Washington Post Honorable Mention and also, like Casimir, was engaged in other activities. He competed in the shot put, placing sixth at SMAC, SMAC and 11th at the region. Cameron will be attending Penn State University at Harrisburg in the fall. Will be studying computer networking and it says here, he will be on the track and field team. So please congratulate me. Obviously, we have two wonderful athletes who are a credit to themselves, their family and their school, but that's not possible without the support of their coaching staff and not all of those could be with us today. And of course, their families that helped them get there every day. So congratulations to everybody, our state champions. It was a good spring. The Chopticon Varsity Baseball Team finished their season with an overall record of 22 and 1. The team won SMAC with a record of 13 and 1 and went on to win the region, beating JM Bennett High School 8-5. They then defeated Urbana High School 6-2 in the state semifinal and advanced to the state final. On May 23rd, they defeated Mount Hebron High School by a score of 1-0 to win the state championship, which was held at Ripken Stadium. Again, there were several coaches that were responsible for a lot of this.
Before you introduce the coaches, what did they do at the end there?
The state championship?
Yeah, so he said, I just wondered, there was no applause at the end of it. So they beat, did they win in a dramatic fashion? Was it a good game to watch? Was it an exciting finish to that? Yeah, it was. Just have a round of applause. If it was in a dramatic fashion, I wonder how many thousands of times that video has been watched. That's incredible. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. With us this evening is head coach, Coach Sapp, who should come forward, and Kenneth Hammett. During the season, other assistants were Mr. John Ford, Joseph Cook, Brad Coombs and Neil Camp. I remember Mr. Sapp saying earlier on when they won SMAC... I remember Mr. Sapp saying earlier on, when they won SMAC, he said, "Team's happy with that." He goes, "I'm not," meaning there's more to come. So you have a coach that has had high expectations for you and took you the entire way, and I hope you appreciate that. Also, I'd like to recognize Mr. Steve Williams from the Chopticon Administration, representing them this evening. Some of the players, say, possibly on vacation or started summer jobs, but we wanted to mention everybody, but as not everybody's here, if your name is called, please, please come forward, and we do have a certificate for you. Let me just, these are in alphabetical order. Thomas Anderson. Austin received a SMAC Honorable Mention and will be attending Randolph Macon College, where he plans on playing baseball. Nick was voted all-conference first-team outfielder. He will be attending Towson University and playing football. Jay Howard. Jay was voted all-conference team, second-team shortstop. He will be attending Salisbury University and playing baseball. Andrew Hill. Christopher was voted all-conference first-team third base. He will be going to CSM and playing baseball. Zachary Giroux. Zachary will also be going to CSM. Robert was voted all-conference first-team catcher, going to Brunswick College and playing baseball. Jeff Lacy. Chris will be going to CSM and also playing baseball. Sean Lemon. Mr. Sapp might want to expand on this a little bit. LJ Newsom. LJ was voted all-conference first-team pitcher, voted SMAC Most Outstanding Player, and was drafted by the Seattle Mariners. So he's definitely not here right now. And Mr. Sapp's getting 10 percent, so. He wishes. Kenny Polk. Kenny's going to CSM. Derek Welch. And Jacob Wood. And Jacob received a SMAC Honorable Mention. Would not be complete without mentioning the support of the team statisticians, Carly Appleby, Sarah Burr, and Megan Williams. So please congratulate me in recognizing, sorry, please join me in congratulating. We'll try that again. Please join me.
To our baseball parents as well, you are as devoted and as in the game as your children. Absolutely, absolutely. It's a very special, you're a very special group of young men, you're very special coaches. Parents, you need to be so very proud of your children, need to be recognized at state levels. So if we could take a break?
We are gonna take a break so that we can
Take some pictures.
Take some pictures and congratulate the recipients here. Right, we will re... Okay. We all ready?
Ready.
And we're ready. All right, now, no public hearing? Public comment?
Yes.
We have someone that's gonna speak. Okay. So I'm gonna go ahead and take the opportunity to read the public comment statement. "The Board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. The Board takes its time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not, however, the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about individual staff members that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the superintendent. This Board will not permit comments criticizing individual staff or students since this is outside the scope of public comment. Additionally, the Board sits as an appellate body in both student-employee appeals. The Board cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence their ability to deliberate. To maintain the ability of the Board to render a fair and unbiased decision, comments regarding individual student or personal issues cannot be presented at public comment. Speakers must sign in at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and speakers may not yield their time to someone else. The Board encourages speakers to present written statements to the Board Secretary, who will distribute copies to all Board members."
Good evening. I am Jill Morris. I'm a special education par educator at Hollywood Elementary. I've been in that position for four years. I come tonight in a very positive mode to reintroduce myself to the Board of Education and staff members that are here. I have the greatest honor of being elected president of CSMIC, and I will begin my new term July 10th. I'm very excited about this adventure I'm going to embark on. I have been on the Board for two years, serving in the capacity of Vice President, and I'm really excited about the things that happened this last year, the positive outcomes we had, the positive motion forward with the community, with the Board of County Commissioners. And I just really wanna reach out to you here at the Board of Education and say that I am a person that feels, that I am a strong advocate for support employees of our school system. I'm very proud of what we do and what we accomplish every day to make our schools go forward. It's really interesting, there's been a lot of talk about that today because of Brad. And I will say, I know he's tired, he had to go home, but the only little bit of sadness I have is I won't get to serve with Brad. And I really do admire him greatly, and I was so moved by the things that were said about him today. And if I can bring half of what Brad brought to his 41 years, I will be doing, I feel, the employees of the support education, I'll be doing them proud. And so I'll be on a learning curve. I hope to meet all of you and have personal conversations with you. And I'm gonna use a nice word that people use to talk about me. You can change the label as you get to know me better, but a lot of people describe me as tenacious. And I really do try to dig in, I really do try to understand, but most of all, I really do try to listen. And as I'm listening to our support employees, there are concerns, and I hope to bring those forward in a positive and productive way to move the conversation forward. So I just wanted to come tonight and say thank you for a great year. I'm looking forward to a very positive two years of my position, and my email and my phone, I don't know how you say it now, my Twitter, it's all open. Just contact me and let's have a conversation, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
All right. Now for the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved. Now on to the action items. We have first up, Ms. Charbonne, Soul Source Procurement for Kurzweil, 3,000 Firefly.
Good evening, Ms. Charbonne.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm here tonight to share with you a request. We purchased about 1990, '91 was the first time that we had purchased the Kurzweil text reader software system. And over the past many years, we've been able to upgrade with kind of chewing gum and spit, we've been able to keep this thing going. And we've reached the life of the current program that we have. The original program was a standalone, it was tied to individual machines at sites. And what I'm requesting tonight is consideration to purchase the newest system. The new license is not tied to any specific machine, it's a web-based system which provides access to all of our students. It reduces the need for students to leave the classroom and go to a computer lab or to go to wherever a device is, and allows students to access the supports of this software in the classroom. The new system provides both academic as well as UDL access opportunities for all students. It has a word predictor in addition to the text-to-speech, which is the main piece that we need for assessments. It also has writing supports. It's similar to Microsoft Word in that it has spell checks, word prediction, dictionary. It supports study skills. Within it, it has highlighting features, annotating, highlighting key vocabulary words, graphic organizers. Students can develop their own individual study guides. An interesting feature that I've found particularly beneficial is that when students are writing, it has the auditory feedback for the kids. I'm not, I find it difficult to edit my own work, but this, and this is any student, not just students with disabilities. It's an opportunity, I think one of the greatest benefits, is it provides an opportunity for our students to learn to use different technology supports. Typically, the only time they learn, they are able to use these strategies and to use the access technology is if they're using the test samples that are available online. So this is a way for us to teach kids how to use UDL strategies. Whoops, wrong way. UDL is the only text reader software that is approved by the Maryland State Department of Education for all of our mandated assessments. What currently happens, or what will be happening, is as a system, we are identifying students through the Personal Needs Plans and through IEPs. That file is uploaded and sent to our local accountability coordinator, send that file to MSD-E. And then this cloud-based system has that accessibility accommodation, that allowable accommodation for all of our assessments, or for the state assessments. And then we can access that through our SMCPS account. Correct, Mr. Howard? For local assessments or local opportunities, we scan in in the same way we've been doing it. You scan the material in, and then students can access it that way. This is also available to children and their families at home. Teachers have availability to it, which again, provides enhanced opportunities for all of our kids. Oh, I can't get the arrows right. Envision Technology is the corporation, which is the sole provider for the state of Maryland for all products by Kurzweil Educational System. This is the only text reader that is approved for us, and I request consideration to move forward in upgrading and updating this technology. Do you have any questions?
Sarita?
No question, thank you.
Mary?
No, it's the Soul Source, it's approved by MSD-E. All students can use it, they can use it at home. Seem like it supports everything that we need.
I'm glad that there is greater accessibility to it, and I think one of the drawbacks for it, if there has been one, is that up until now, students have, it's been assigned to certain machines, they had to use it at school and oftentimes out of the classroom, and this really takes it, I think, into this century versus the last one, so. I'm glad that we're able to move forward with this. Thank you.
And thank you for providing the answers to the questions. I had sent a load of questions ahead of time to Ms. Charbonne. My, you know, about how, it was, how did teachers load the tests? I didn't know if this was gonna be any easier on them, or if it was gonna, you know, make things more difficult. And then about the program assist with the writing, which Ms. Charbonne went over. And then also, along with the Kurzweil, has, they also have accessible curriculum through their, the central library, and that you stated there's 1,800 classic books with additional link to over 1,000 leveled readers in the A to Z books. So I think that's wonderful. I think it's a, you know, I have seen the spit in the chewing gum one at work, you know, so I think this is great to have an upgrade for this, or a new, you know, basically a new program. And then I asked about the training for teachers, because I know that sometimes that can be difficult, especially with getting a new program. And you said that the contract allows for 10 hours of onsite training from the Envision Technology, and that's, and also Tips of the Day, and...
Those are built into the software. We also are working in our department, a plan, a part of our own professional development, is our assistive technology instructional resource teacher will be working with general ed resource teachers to develop specific kind of key features, and we can do training at the IRT meetings during the year, and they can, that's another way to get that out into the system. What's pretty amazing about this is the opportunity to teach children how to use access with the capital A, all of those features that a lot of the kids, kind of our little people know how to do that, and I think some of the older kids, as, you know, technologically savvy as they are, these are opportunities to how, to teach them how to use it instructionally. So, okay. Do we have any other questions?
None.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Okay. I wanna make sure I'm on the right one. Okay. Kurzweil. Okay. I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of the Kurzweil 3,000 Firefly software in the amount of $61,200 as a three-year contract to commence July 1st, 2015.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, pass. Thank you. You're welcome. Next up...
Next up, we have Ms. Greeley for the utilization of Apex digital learning content and tutorials.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Education members and Mr. Smith. I'm here today to present the value of continuing our contract with Apex Learning. So what I first want to address is why Apex Learning. And one of the issues that you may not understand is we originally started with it as a grant. So we became very knowledgeable about the depth and breadth of the content. And what we found was, it was of course engaging students in a different way than the classroom teacher standing in the front does. It prepares them for college and for work, because a lot of courses are online now, as well as webinars are on, offer such features. And then it provides our staff and students to standards-based content in all areas, including the advanced placement. But the most important thing about what we have found with any digital content is it puts the students in charge of their learning. They can recover, they can relearn, and they can accelerate their learning. We put up the total percentages of how Apex Learning was used this year. Now, when you look at the courses enrolled, that's where the students actually started. Once they're enrolled, the data does not go away. And then when you look at courses completed, you may say 47.1% of courses for original credit is not a high average. However, it is when you recognize that not all students are online learners. And a lot of students will go in saying that they would like to take a course, whether it's for original credit, credit recovery, quarter recovery, unit recovery, or supplemental. But they need to determine whether or not it is their learning style. So that's very important to remember. Credit recovery has been one of the most opportune ways for our students to recapture credits. Now that courses are a year long, we do not have as many students in credit recovery courses. But of those credit recovery courses, we have approximately 47.7% of our students completing. Quarter recovery and unit recovery, and quarter recovery is only here, are the two ways that students can relearn content as directed by the classroom teacher via a digital content. Which means this allows a student, whether it's just a unit and/or entire quarter, they can actually go in and recover or recoup some part or portion thereof what occurred during that quarter. And then supplemental are students who would go in, or teachers who would go in and use it just as a part of their classroom content. So Apex Learning is allowing us to use their digital content, everything that is available, and I want to stress that again, everything that is available, including tutorials across all nine through 12 students. So I went to my next slide, and of course, we have access to all content and tutorials. It allows us to customize how we're using it, as well as the content to be used. Meaning, a teacher can go in and say, I only want this student to do unit one, unit five, and unit six. And they will get an additional grade in their grade book. As you see, SMCPS uses Apex Learning for courses for original credit. And those have to be MSDE-approved courses. Which means that a student is only given a mentor slash coach that follows their progress and is a highly qualified teacher who can assist them if asked. Credit recovery, quarter recovery, unit recovery, those are all at our, our staff determines how they are to be used. And then of course blended learning would be the integration of any of the digital content into a classroom. So in my personal opinion, as humble as it may be, we are actually utilizing the content to the nth degree. And I will say, we have been recognized for how we use and how we morph yearly the content. So our successes were or are attributed to the strong leadership about the implementation. And that comes from the staff, the administration, and then the central office and the Board of Ed. And then the recognition that student-centered learning improves student performance, which leads to increased graduation rate. And one of our successes is that in every one of our schools, we have a digital content teacher who is in a lab, or that a lab is available and staffed all periods of the day so that a student can go eat lunch and then has permission to come in and actually either recover, relearn, work on credit recovery. So all of that is tied to professional development. We've had the content for five years. As I said, it started out as a grant, but we've utilized it now for additional years. And I am recommending please to the Board of Education that they approve the contract for $171,220. And that three-year contract is not the one I proposed, so it's... Was that the three-year one?
Three-year contract.
Yes. It's, it locks in the price. Is that what it was?
It says a cost for one-year contract.
One year. So it's one year. I had asked for three years, and at this point, it's a one-year because of the timeframe. So that should say one year.
Sarita?
Any questions?
I do think that Apex has been a good resource for many students, but what are some of the other digital curriculums that students have been using to take courses?
Online?
Yes.
What other vendors you're referencing?
Correct.
So there are other vendors. When a student takes a course from another vendor, it would be taken only for original credit, which means it has to be approved by the state of Maryland. And I did a little compilation here. There's, EdMendium has three courses approved by the state. FuelEd has 11. Connections Learning has 13. Florida Virtual has 28, 14 of which are world language courses. Just remember that.
Except that...
Apex has, pardon me?
Florida Virtual is on probation in the state and is, as I understand it, very possibly not going to be renewed.
Right. And I can reference how they review. Then Apex has 28, but only four of those courses are world language. Many of them are AP courses students can take online, for instance, micro and macroeconomics, some Spanish courses. And then we have the brand-new MSDE courses that'll be available next year that a student could take for the CTE courses. And I see Mike, Mr. Boyle sitting in the audience. So those are a few, but those were the ones that had the majority of the, those were the vendors that had a majority of approved courses. So Sarita, anything that is approved, a parent can elect to choose to go outside of our district to take a course during the regular school day. And I do want to stress that, because during the summer, when students are accelerating, there is a charge for the teacher who actually mentors, monitors, and coaches the student.
Okay, thank you.
I think this is a wonderful opportunity to bring learning up into the digital age where students have the opportunity for original credit, credit recovery, quarter recovery, unit recovery, blended learning. There are many opportunities for the student to be successful. So all of this leads to a higher graduation rate. And we want our students to graduate from high school so they can go on to further education and trade school and military, or whatever they're going to do, so that they can be successful and contributing members of society. And we would love to increase the completion rate. You know, we have a trend of five years, like you say, not all students are, that's their thing to do it that way. But even without this program, the dropout rate, I'm sure, would go up and our graduation rate would not be as higher. And the program that you have is a good program. It's not on the list of being looked at or shut down. It at Office 28. Excuse me?
It is, it is the vendor of choice that they've been, you know, very highly counted.
The rigor involved.
Yeah.
And it's aligned content. It offers core foundation courses, core courses, honors courses, AP courses, and none of the other ones would have such a splendid version for us to pick from.
Saying like this is the premier way to go with Apex Learning. So I applaud it, because anything to help students graduate, to encourage students not to quit, that oh, if I can't get it this way, then I can try it this way. And we want to increase that graduation rate, right, Mr. Smith?
Yes, and we will.
And we will, and this is an option to do it.
And if I could just interject, the whole point of quarter and unit recovery is that so no student actually fails at the time when they need to relearn something. Also, recovery, unit recovery does not have to be for a student who is failing. It can be for a student who says, I really didn't get this. Can I go study whatever with, I'm going to pick calculus because I know nothing about calculus, but I didn't get that. Can I have access to the content to reteach myself? And that's what we need to do so that we build those independent learners in college and beyond.
Because it's going this way, more digital learning.
That's right.
I can see it moving in that direction. So St. Mary's County is on board with this, and we had this program. So thank you very much.
Kathy?
It is true that not every student is successful at using online learning. The, but I think the numbers that we're showing are certainly in the right direction. Even if only one out of two students is successful this specific way, it's, it is providing a very positive service. And I think the other piece is that it's one of a many-pronged approach to, in essence, building a scaffold for students to support them where they need to be supported. Especially like the fact that portions of this can be utilized within any classroom. Right, at any time. And so in that way, all students have the opportunity to learn through that. And it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't take away from anyone. I like the idea of the blended learning.
Right.
I am interested to understand, you say that you're asking for a one-year contract, and you talk about a three-year contract there. Would we have gotten a better price had we elected to go for a three-year?
The three-year contract was if we were going to add middle school in, then they would talk about a three-year lock-in price. This is actually the same price we paid this year.
Right.
So they have locked us in. And as I said, we're kind of their shining stars in the group that they don't want to lose us. So if I can say it that way, which I probably shouldn't have. But anyway, we had just been talking about locking in a three-year because in referencing another contract, I was saying, well, you know, we always get multi-year, we can look at multi-year contracts too. So...
Any, any understanding that if we extended it into the middle school, what kind of participation we would have and how successful that would be, or how...
The thing about the middle school is that the content is common core content. However, it is not considered accredited. So a student would not take a sixth-grade math, or seventh-grade math, or an eighth-grade math, or whatever content is available as accredited course. So they would not be doing something for original credit. It would all be considered a supplemental component of the classroom.
Okay.
And as you say, it'll reach another learning modality as far as if a student needs to relearn, or the teacher is not reaching there.
Okay. All right. I think it's, over the last five years, it has been demonstrated that it's a very positive addition to what we're doing. I think a big part of that is also the teachers that are in those particular learning labs. And having been there and stood over, stood behind the students as they were working and had them talk to me about what they were learning and how they were learning it, the students were pretty uniformly positive about it. And it was not watered-down curriculum, which was...
Not at all.
My concern was that we're just letting students skate through. And I saw with my own eyes, that's not the fact, that's not the case.
Right.
And, and different students learn in different ways. And I've heard from enough students who said this was a better way for them to learn. And I think part of that is because they're guided through, some of the students that I heard from at the state level for the Maryland Advisory Council on Virtual Learning was that they were sort of left dangling in the particular original credit courses that they were taking. And, and they, and they might be one of four who signed up for it, only one of whom decided to continue with it, and they were expressing frustration that they were being graded on, on course participation, and they were talking with themselves. But if they didn't talk with themselves, they didn't get the credit for it.
Right.
Yes, they got penalized for it. And they also said that they, I think, took a bigger bite than they realized, and that there was a great deal more work involved with those courses than they expected. And that was a challenge for them. So I think the way that we offer this through the school system is the best working situation. And, and I think the proof is in the product. So thank you very much for bringing it forward. I certainly support this.
Okay. I sent you my list of what, 14 questions? And I still have more. All right. So I asked you about the other companies that have digital curriculum, and I know about the Florida Virtual School, the Connections Learning, and the FuelEd. The, and I know that you stated that the connection, these other ones do not have as many original credits. But have you gone through like the, like say, the Connections Learning to see what type of, how their program is set up?
The program, what it really, what we look at first and investigate is the content itself.
Okay.
And the rigor and the alignment of the content to what we have in our classrooms, and to meet the expectations of we, what we have in our county. So that is one of the biggest issues when you're going with an online learning company, that you investigate the content before you investigate the delivery, although we do have to comply by UDL rules.
Okay.
And by the way, Kurzweil Firefly works with Apex, just so you know.
Okay, so how did Connections, I'm just saying, because like I went through the different ones.
Okay.
And how did Connections Learning compare as far as the content than with the Apex?
I mean, off the top of my head, I cannot tell you. The reason that, that we stayed with Apex though, I do remember, was to do with the rigor of the content. A lot of them don't have the honors capacity, and every course in Apex has an honors level, so it ramps up the rigor. It also has that foundation course so that it can be used in a blended learning, potentially a special ed classroom. The foundation courses are being utilized as for review. But as far as a specific company, if that's a request, I would, I'll go in and review it and give you a response, but...
But I would also, I would also say that Apex Learning, you know, we have a five-year relationship with them. And one of the things that makes our relationship with Apex so special is the way they came in through a grant, and then their willingness to work with us, and work specifically with their content supervisors. Because content supervisors were always suspect of something outside of their direct purview, so they really have spent the time to go through content to make sure that it is aligned and to move modules around. And then we've gone back with our teaching staff and our department chairs, and they've gone through all of the content, because they don't want a child dropping out of their classroom to go over to Apex to take a tutorial or a mini-unit that's not aligned. So they've gone through all those different elements to the point where they're actually comfortable with the student going offline, working that, working that thing, coming back in. Apex is very proud of the work that they've done here, as we are, in that we are one of the first school systems to say, we're going to have a fully-certified teacher identified in each school every period of the day to work specifically with kids as they pull out and push in. It is a five-year process. They have been quite generous in their pricing. And although it is an amount of money, you look at and you say, well, that's $171,000, that barely covers the cost of three teachers. And we're talking about thousands of courses. And we're talking about thousands of courses that we have credits, that we have recovered or put kids back on the right track. It is really something that, that we need to feel very proud and, and secure in with Apex in particular. I know that they have asked us repeatedly to go out and speak to other school systems about the way we integrate their particular tool because the, the level of success that we have. And if you look at our graduation rate, our graduation rate and the increase and the increasing in our graduation rate, when we come forward with the graduation rate for this year, it's, I think you're going to be fairly staggered. And there are going to be people that say, how could you possibly do that? You're pushing people through. And I will tell you, that is completely a falsehood. Have that person come and see me personally. We'll take them into a room and we'll sit them down in front of Apex and we'll have them work through foundation-level coursework and see how they do.
And again, we're not waiting for a student to fail because we should not be waiting for credit recovery or year-long recovery.
Intervention happens when struggles begin, and that's how they get righted.
Okay, I have some, several more questions. I asked about the Apex Learning available for all students. And you said it's available for the high school students for original credit. But is it put out there? Because we don't have, I mean, when we look at it, 102 out of all the students that we have, and I really think that if we have a program that is available for students and it is, you know, MSDA-approved, then is, you know, I guess I, I would want to see more use out of the product. So to encourage people to take, you know, take a course.
We have seen our numbers increase in courses for original credit because we have quite a few students who are trying to accelerate their learning. But the student has to have the drive to complete the course on their own. They have to be self-motivated. As well as when you provide a course for original credit, you still need to assign a highly qualified teacher who is there to answer and to assist. Because in St. Mary's County, we don't say, it's electronic, sorry, there you are. It is work through it. When you have questions, there is someone that you can connect with. Any course that is approved for original credit in Apex can be taken by any high school student. And we talk to high school because that is where the courses are given for credit. Minus the algebra in middle school and the first-year language in middle school. Most of the courses for credits that appear on a transcript are in the high school arena. So right now, that's where the content is.
So you do put the word out that students?
Every counselor, every principal, Jake was in here, I thought maybe he left.
Ms. Montgomery is in here.
Okay, I just want to, like at the beginning of the year, you know, this is available for you if you, you know, think that online is for you. I just want to make sure that students know that, you know, or parents, you know, because parents know if their child is really motivated enough to, to be doing that. And, and I will tell you that I'm very aware of the Apex. My son took, he was the first one to take it at Lenartown High School, the only one during that year, and he took it for original credit. Somehow he got bumped up in math when he had placed and never had taken the geometry. So here we were, okay, a little, little oops with the whole setting him up for his classes. But here comes December, and now we get the word that he might not graduate because he did not have geometry. So he was the only one that was then online at that point with Apex. I, so I'm well aware how the, the program works, I've, I've seen it. But I guess, you know, for original credit, you know, I'm only seeing 102 students. And I think there's so many things that can be offered, even if it's, if it's something that they're interested in, and it's not being utilized.
And I take that as we can advertise better in the school year, we can publicize something. The problem with publishing which courses are approved by the state of Maryland in the Apex content is that they change. And I will say, just for example, the geometry course your son took, the content was rated rigorous and above. But the accessibility features that must accompany every online learning course, they did not meet in the timeframe they were given. So they have pulled it, and Apex is working on the few checks that they got on the accessibility. So when you talked about Florida Virtual, they have 16 of their 28 that are considered at risk for content. That tells you the type of content that is being produced and why I'm really promoting that we stay with the, the Apex Learning digital content because of its rigor and the different levels. So absolutely.
Okay, then also, you did provide the board with the active enrollments and, you know, the tutorial, the active enrollments, modules attempted.
Yes.
Now, are these students that are currently enrolled?
This was this year's data only. And so some of the courses have not closed out. And actually, some of the original credit courses, I have enrolled 15 students since the beginning of May to take courses for original credit. So they would be covered in here. So they would, you know, they're working on them over the summer.
Now, you also have English seven and English eight. So as active enrollments, 15 in English seven and 183 in English eight. So does that mean that the middle schoolers are currently online?
No, our English, any of the, we're lucky. We have access to every bit of the Apex content, ninth through 12th graders. So we have s- some students who are in and utilizing the seventh-grade English curriculum in order to improve their learning.
Okay, okay. And, um, so this contract, um, okay. And the electives, what electives are they accessing?
An elective is anything a student has a choice of. So it could be AP, I mean, it could be a music apprè, it could be a CTE course. We have students who can take some, there's a health course if they need to recover, a health course in a blended learning environment. So it just varies. If you would like me to get a list and just give you all of them, Mrs. Weaver, I would be happy to give you every course listed.
No, I just wanted some examples to find out kind of what students were doing at this, this point.
Okay.
And then I did ask, and, and this was kind of really how all the blended learning courses are. It says, well, Apex, it's about the students being in the class. And what it is, is you had responded back, the teachers are engaged in providing feedback and reviewing student work for blind courses. At least 20% of the time, the students will be with a highly qualified teacher face-to-face. And I know that's for questions or if, you know, if they're having difficulty with something.
And that's a state legislative mandate. They produce that.
So I'm trying to see if there was anything else. You know, and I know that one of the things Sarita asked was, you know, any other online courses that would get our students encouraged to, you know, like if they, if it was credit recovery, something, you know, to encourage them to get on there and to be utilizing this resource.
And they have, they have access to that for credit recovery, unit recovery, quarter recovery via the teacher. You know, if it's a student who is, who just needs some type of recovery, they have access to any of the content, the electives, the core contents, the world languages, things of that nature.
Okay, and you also stated the other vendors. So if, let's say, my son wanted to take a, a course from, I don't know, what is that? The Florida?
Virtual School.
Right, that one. You would accept that here at St. Mary's County?
Okay, can I walk through the process? A student, a high school student would approach the guidance counselor who knows the student, their capabilities, and/or if they're an incoming ninth grader, they would have a conversation so they can, I hate to say size up, but determine if the student is really meant to take this course. They have a dialogue with the counselor. The counselor gets the parents involved in the dialogue. The counselor gets the principal involved after they have determined that yes, Sarita can take an online course. Then there's a form in which you fill out that says, the counselor, the principal, I see Maureen, so I keep looking at her, the principal, the student, and the parent recognize that they are held to the ethics of taking an online course and not cheating, to that they are responsible for their learning. So any course that was listed in here from Florida Virtual School or Connected Learning that is approved by MSDA could be taken. You are responsible for the, for paying for the content if it is not Apex Learning.
Okay, that's what I wanted to find out.
Just the same as if a child wanted to take a course at CSM or St. Mary's College or, or what have you.
And course prices vary. So usually you end up paying for a semester of something, but realize that now St. Mary's is involved in year-long courses. So they would have to complete the both semesters.
So I, I guess just my one last comment is, especially for supplemental and original credit, I know the credit recovery, we hope that number goes down. So that means that students are doing well in the classroom. But if not, I want to see them taking full advantage of this opportunity. And like the supplemental and the original credit, like I said, I really just think that, you know, to, to make sure that people are aware of it. And, and it has to be a right fit, but.
And if I could just comment though, but we cannot consider recovery a bad thing. As I said, if you have access, if students know they have access to the content and they can access another way to learn content, it's, we've tagged recovery. And actually, I had a teacher say, why don't you take recovery off it? Because it gives a bad connotation. And, and I think that is very true, a very valid statement. So what we need to do is reduce the number of kids who actually fail a course and need to recover the full credit. But we want to increase the opportunities for students to either reteach, relearn themselves and/or accelerate their learning. And I, that is what you're saying, but I just don't want people to think unit and quarter recovery is the bad thing because we all know one test can bring you down or one unit, you might not understand something, which can impact everything else you learn. So we want to impact the learning at the time it is taught.
Right, that is correct. So like I said, just, just a little bit more, you know, people taking advantage of it.
I will work on getting, making sure the word is out. And I will contact the high school principals that they can put on their website, that there are opportunities. But we say that they have to go through the counselor because we don't accept just any course. And it's very important that the counselor is involved and understands that student. But I will absolutely put that on my list.
And just like what you were saying, that you're going to contact the counselors, that they're, you're going to make sure that students are more aware of the options that they have. I do think that's a really good idea, especially because there are students who I know who want to take extra courses and then they just aren't aware of all the resources that we do have available because of things like this. So thank you for suggesting to work on it.
Is it in a program of studies?
Yeah, well, we have a, a statement about online learning, yes. And that they have to address it with their counselors. And we have it on the web that there are, but everything goes through the counseling process because that's critical.
Well, keep in mind that this, that the Apex Learning, the recovery and the original credit is one half of the, the other half is the tutorials that are in, that are in the classrooms. And, you know, you've got over 1,500 kids enrolled in tutorials and 38,000 minutes of, of online session time for that. I, I apologize to the board. We really thought we were just bringing an action item forward for you to approve the Apex contract for the, for next year. It's obvious that with the conversation with the board, you'd like to have an in-depth informational item where we'll bring back, as we have done in the past, Apex, what it is, what it looks like. You could actually have the Apex teachers come in. It's a, Ms. Weaver, it's a, had I, had I known, we would have, we would have done that. We were just kind of bringing forward a contract. I know that there are more than enough people out in the buildings that really want to come forward and, and talk about the great things that are happening and, and seek input as to how we can make it better so that all kids are, are aware of the option of, of taking an Apex no-cost course for original credit. I would argue that students who need Apex know about Apex. And Apex is a, is a fairly, I don't know that you're going to, you're going to find anybody in a high school that doesn't know what we're, what we're doing with it. But if you would like, I would, I would certainly love to bring back a full-blown 45, well, this is a 45-minute, but a full-blown like hour session to really, to real, so you could hear from the teachers who are manning those, those classrooms and working with the kids and, and maybe even from a couple of kids personally for the way that they've been able to access the curriculum. So if you will indulge me, we will add that to the itinerary for perhaps August.
August or September.
That would be, that would be great. We'll have, we'll have staff back by then and teachers. And, and we'll come back and we'll do a, we'll do a full board presentation so you can see what we're getting for, if, if so approved, the $171,220.
Okay, and as that being said, and I would like that. Do I have a motion to, for the Apex Digital Learning?
I move that the Board of Education approve the Apex Learning contract in the amount of $171,220 as presented by staff.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
And we will see you in August.
Okay.
I can't wait.
Sounds good. And I'm sure I'll have my list of questions again.
Oh, my gosh.
All right, and now we have Mr. Howard.
Hello, board.
Hello, Mr. Howard.
I have three action items tonight. And I'm going to try to make these fast, hopefully.
All right, I can care for it.
The first one is a, I'm asking for the approval to purchase some Lenovo computer monitors for the recent award. Let me switch over here. The reason we looked at the Lenovo monitors, the Lenovo monitors for some computer purchases, the higher resolution, we found that when we went out and purchased some of the monitors back in April, that some of them only had the lower resolution capabilities. This particular monitor and others, it fits better with the Lenovo computers we purchased. And we wanted to get one in here for our new school to really have it, support all the features that the computers will allow. It has sharper pitch, picture quality. As I said, it supports the newer display technologies like HDMI. So with that, this monitor will have a longer life in the school system. Because some of the monitors we bought, because of budget, for the price point, only supported like VGA's, which is really going out. So we're looking at purchasing 202 units for Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School. And that was going to be out of the Capital Project. And 118 units for various elementary schools. As you remember, I've briefed in the past that the elementary schools has a, they have a lot of computers that need to be replaced. So these will go really nicely for a lot of our elementary schools in the media centers and the classroom, computer labs for Park. So I'm asking that the board approve the purchase of 202 of the 19 and a half-inch Lenovo monitors. The Lenovo tinies will fit right behind them real nicely. We've tested them out. I have one at the shop. I didn't bring one with me tonight, but did have a picture on the other slide. It's, it's a really nice piece. So any questions on this one?
Sarita?
No questions, thank you.
I don't have any questions like you. Don't look so surprised.
Cut her off guard. Don't scare me, Mary.
It looks good to me. What you presented looks great.
All right, thank you.
No questions.
I appreciate the information. I don't have any questions.
All right, so do we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County approve the purchase of 202 19.5-inch Lenovo ThinkVision monitors, item two, for Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School from DSR Computer, Inc. And 118 monitors for various elementary schools for a total of 320 monitors at a grand total of $53,120. Further, that board approval is requested and granted to purchase additional monitors using the lowest-priced items that are circled and identified by vendors on the attached price quote summary on an as-needed basis and as funding permits for purchases under $25,000. These units, use, unit prices are valid through December 31st, 2015, with the option to renew the contract through June 30th, 2016 upon. the option to renew the contract through June thirtieth, 2016 upon mutual consent. And, of course, any monitor purchases of twenty-five thousand dollars or more would be presented to the board as separate consent agenda items.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those were approved.
Thank you.
And just so the public understands, the board does have a policy that, that indicates that for procedural purposes administratively, if there are certain purchases that occur that are under the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, they don't have to be directly authorized by the board, but the board is certainly aware of them.
All right, so, Mr. Howard, we have the next purchase of Dell laptops.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and for the build-out for the new elementary school, we found the need that we need a mixture of like the mini-computers and then laptops to go into the upstairs computer lab, downstairs working with many people in the school system. Larry and I've spent a lot of time, Mr. Hartwick, on coming up with a, you know, detailed list for opening the school. And during that process, we found that we need to purchase some, quite a few. And, some of the benefits of the Dell laptops that we were looking at, number one, the price, when I was evaluating the Lenovo price that we purchased, I think it was back in December, it wasn't, we didn't lock it in for a year. And things changed with some things out in the industry that drove the price up. As we were purchasing more, it started creeping up. So, we started looking at other systems over the last few months. And Dell's been really eager to do business with us and I've had my techs really evaluate these. And, you know, some of the benefits I highlighted up here, it, it's really easy for us to put a working image. When I say an image, it's, we buy it, you know, it comes to us, we have to get it set up for our environment and so we can make sure it has all the antivirus programs, the software we want on it. It's not one that's causing us difficulties on the backend, which is my side. And, the price point for the computer is very strong, it's coming with eight gig of memory, the I5 processor, the higher-end wireless interface, network interface on the unit, the higher-end unit, which I want to go into for some of the staff members, is going to have the numeric keypad on the right, which the old, you know, I shouldn't say old, sorry, but the accounting type who are used to using that, it's, it supports that. So, we're looking at getting a hundred and thirty-eight for the student use. I brought, you know, one of each here, you know, if anyone wants to look at one. It's a little bit smaller, it's not as heavy as the one for the administrators. And, we have forty-two that are going to be for instructors for the new school and two hundred and forty are going to be a mid-level technology refresh. And, right now, we're about, the average one will be about four years old that are in use right now every day. Ms. McCourt back there, I think, has one that's probably four years old. That's to the point where you really want to refresh that technology because downtime is, it's, you know, we don't want to have our administrators with not having a good working computer. So, what I'm asking is the purchase of four hundred and twenty laptops from Dell. The Dell has a contract off of the MEAT contract, which, working with Ms. Mail and Ms. McCourt's office, that's one of the vehicles we like using from the state, is the Maryland Enterprise Educational Consortium. And, they have a very nice system where they make sure all the vendors meet all the qualifications. So, any questions on the Dell laptops that I can answer?
Sarita?
No questions, thank you.
And I had asked you earlier, what schools would be receiving the seventy-four computers?
For the seventy-four, for these of the laptops?
Yeah, you have various schools and you had just put down that some of the elementary school media centers based on their needs, so I just was kind of curious.
Ms. Greeley, you're still here? We need to have that discussion. She wanted to make sure, that's what she told me last week, that we're going to sit down and make sure they're going to the right ones. Am I correct? So, we can, we can report back out before, you know, as we deploy these if you'd like because...
No, 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 I just, I was just curious to find out kind of like where they were going because you just had various, so I was just...
Can I put it in my terms? We had, the, the quality of the, all of the computers in the, most elementary schools have not been refreshed in a number of years and they're much older than four years old.
Correct.
So, it's a matter of, in my opinion, determining who's got the oldest group. And because of Park, we want to have very usable, user-friendly, not IT hogs for attention. So, Dave and I work well on it.
We, we try to do it by the need, make sure it's a high use, they're not going to be just sitting there used once a year. So, we want them out being used while they're under warranty, make sure they're, they're working fine, so.
Okay, thank you. Mary?
No questions, thank you. Great job.
All right, thanks.
No questions.
All right, so do I have a motion for purchase of the Dell laptops?
I move that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County approve the purchase of four hundred and twenty Dell laptops from Dell as described in a total amount of two hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars and eighty-six cents. Further, board approval is requested to purchase additional Dell laptops using, at the same unit prices shown on and as-needed basis and as funding permits for the purchases under twenty-five thousand dollars. These unit prices are valid for ninety days. Dell laptop purchases of two hundred and twenty-five thousand or more will be presented to the board as a separate consent agenda item.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so you have your Dell laptops.
Thank you.
And we are on to the purchase of technology equipment for new elementary schools.
You know, as we've been talking about these items that are total over twenty-five thousand dollars, most of this is going to go for the new school. Some of the items we're looking at are the Promethean boards and the Epson projectors for the classrooms. So, there's thirty-four rooms that have been identified that will receive these. We had a previous bid put out, so we're just riding off of one that was put out in two thousand and thirteen. So, for these items, we're looking at getting the active boards, which our tech, I really talked to my techs about this and a lot of the people that use these all the time, the Promethean boards, they don't use as much resources on the computers, so that's, that's kind of why we looked at the Promethean. They don't, they haven't been failing, I hate to say that, you know, public, but, you know, they're, they're holding up. So, it's making it easier, they're, they're reliable technology force. So, we're looking at the Promethean active boards, the Epson projectors. And then for the new school, let's see the breakdown, two hundred and thirteen of the Lenovo tinies that we, that were presented back in April, we're looking at purchasing those to put in various locations, classrooms, some offices, so, you know, to outfit the new elementary school. And then we also have some of the monitors that you just approved, the Lenovo tiny monitors, or I'm sorry, the tiny computers, I'm getting it mixed up here, it's all the tiny computers, but a hundred and eighteen are going to be purchased from, let's see what side, that's going to be out of the operating budget. So, any questions on this action item?
Sarita? No questions, thank you.
Mary?
Great, a good job again.
Thank you.
Kathy?
No questions.
And, the only question I had sent you on, on this was the warranty covers, it covers with the contract. And, you had down the computers are three years and the projectors and interactive boards are one year.
One year, correct.
So, all right, I don't have any further questions. So, do we have a motion to approve the purchase of technology equipment for the new elementary school?
I move that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County approve the purchase of thirty-four Promethean boards from Clinton Learning Systems, I'm sorry, Clinton Learning Solutions in the amount of forty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. Thirty-four Epson projectors from Nicholas Papino in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. And, C1 and C2, three hundred and thirty-one Lenovo M73 tiny form factor computers from Daily Computer in the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Let us not forget this twenty-six cents.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so you have a lot of technology to go...
Thank you, guys.
Be busy this summer.
Fun this summer.
I love these huge numbers that come down to pennies.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and now we have Dr. Marr, step on up.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Like Mr. Howard, I have several items too, and I have a number of folks who are going to be joining me for several of these presentations. For all of them, the work represents a collaborative effort and so there are a number of folks who are going to be sharing in answering some questions and being part of this because of the, the great work that's been going on by supervisors, teachers, administrators and others across the system. I'm going to first start with TurnItIn. My first experience with TurnItIn was about three years ago when some teachers at Great Mills High School were using the program and said, "This is really fantastic, it is really helping us to provide feedback for students in writing throughout the entire writing process." And, then the, it spread a little bit like wildfire over the next couple of years and we've been utilizing it now for the last three years in all of our schools. TurnItIn is an online platform for students to submit their papers for review. One of the key features of this program is an originality check that gives feedback to both the students and the teachers in terms of how much there's an overlap in some of the text that they have with something else that's out there. Now, something else that's out there could be a published piece of text out there in other published documents, or it could be their own papers. So, if they've repeated text in previous papers, it'll show up. And that gives teachers then some information about what feedback they need to give students, both in terms of the entire writing process, in terms of citing sources, and sometimes in coming up with more original thoughts. They also use this program as a paperless way in which students can turn in papers and get the feedback. So, all of the papers that an English teacher or a social studies teacher or any teacher collects, it's all in their inbox and they're not carrying bags of it home. To talk about a couple of the features, we have one extraordinary teacher who's been teaching English a number of years at Lattontown High School, Ms. Gill, so if you could come up and share some of these features.
Good evening, Ms. Gill.
Good evening, thanks for letting me come and talk to you about this amazing tool. So, basically, there are three main ways teachers can utilize TurnItIn. And, it's not just for the English teacher, you just happen to have an English teacher in front of you. Art teachers, math teachers, anything can be turned in via this platform, graphic or written. Grade Mark is the way that teachers can give feedback, that is, to the highest level. I create grade mark, I can create and save the comments. I can also tailor comments to specific students. So, now, instead of on a traditional piece of paper writing, you need to elevate the diction here. I can create, see, I can create a grade mark that says, "Please elevate diction, here are a few web resources to consider." And the students can immediately link to a website to help them elevate their diction or their syntax or their literary, anything literary, actually, literary terms is what I was going for. Peer Mark is a way, any middle school teacher or early high school teacher who has ever tried to teach students how to edit each other's paper, it's, it is one of the most painful things that, that teachers try to teach students to do. Peer Mark is brilliant because it has a radio feature, students can rank, you know, in terms of readability, this paper is a five, four, three, two, one. So, they can just click the radio and then give the radio button and then give a sentence or two as to why. Teachers can tailor, there are a bank of questions, or teachers can save their own questions for the specific writing purpose. So, if I'm writing to inform, I can have students peer-edit their own papers. The computer will either randomly generate the papers or I can assign peers so as to differentiate the instruction. And I can create the questions and have students address those questions. So, now it's just, "Your paper was neat, no, why?" And they have to take it to a greater depth. And then the originality report, again, it cross-references, I believe they said something like fifty-five thousand or maybe even greater web sources. It also links to papers in its own database. Now, what I don't want you to think this is, is not a gotcha for plagiarism, that's kind of this commonly understood, "Oh, that's the plagiarism check." Well, no, it's going to hit on even correctly cited sources, anything that appears anywhere else in the database. And why I love that is if I'm teaching synthesizing, I'm teaching synthesis, I want you to take these two other writing, you know, pieces of writing and I want you to put them together in your own. I get the originality report and it's telling me that fifty percent of your paper came from another source. Well, fifty percent of the paper is brilliantly cited and correct and you did not plagiarize at all, but fifty percent of the paper is someone else's idea. You, we need to get more of your own thoughts in there. And really seeing, and it's color-coded, blue is zero, sometimes that's just as dangerous as the red over fifty. How do we get students to integrate the correct, or the, the correct amount of other sources into their writing so that they are college and career-ready? So...
Wow, that was great, thank you, Ms. Gill.
Thanks, thank you.
She taught my son Jacob and now he's going to a liberal arts school to study English.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
It's okay, she taught my daughter Leslie and she went for business, so...
And each of those students are one of, are of the four thousand students who across the system last year submitted twenty-five thousand papers using TurnItIn. That saved a lot of time and effort on the students' part, it saved a lot of time and effort on the teachers' part. Teachers used grade mark to score over seventeen thousand papers. So, you can see the difference in that fact that some things are turned in as draft and they might not be graded, they're just getting feedback and some are scored. Students used peer mark to receive feedback on over thirteen hundred submitted papers. So, this is something that is widely used across the system and there's no other product that's like this out there. It is, again, it is something that was brought forward by teachers three years ago and you can see four thousand students just last year alone using it, it has really grown. And so, over the last three years, we have utilized just a year-to-year contract with, with TurnItIn. What we'd like to do is have a three-year contract that allows for annual payment of that, towards that three-year contract, which by doing that, we have saved about three thousand dollars over the, over that three-year period from what we've been paying. So, our recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the software for this three-year contract at the cost of nineteen thousand, seven forty-six a year.
Sarita, do you have any questions?
I think this has been a, TurnItIn has been an excellent resource in a variety of classes and subjects, as you mentioned. And with the statistics on the number of papers and number of students using TurnItIn, I think those numbers are just going to continue to rise. Thank you.
Mary?
I have seen a number of teachers taking a lot of papers home, they even have them on little carts with wheels. So, now, they can do it differently, it is more effective and efficient for the teacher and the student. It, it's a wonderful resource and, and I really like it. Thank you.
Kathy?
One of the things that you often hear students and parents complain about is that a paper gets turned in and the student doesn't get it back, doesn't get it back, doesn't get it back. And when they finally do, they're so far beyond what they were trying to do in that paper that it's difficult for them sometimes to recall what the assignment was and therefore how well they met the requirements of that assignment. Am I correct in believing that TurnItIn allows teachers to more quickly turn papers around and therefore feedback gets back to students more quickly?
It, it, it expedites the process. And, I forgot to mention that it has this wonderful iPad app.
I was going to say...
I can take my iPad to the soccer field where I do not need, I can download it to the iPad. I can grade hundreds of papers. And then the minute I get back into wireless connectivity, all of my feedback beams up to the cloud and the students can use it. So, I don't even need to be connected.
Come on, it's not, it, it does beam up to the cloud, Ms. Lee. Come on, she's making, you know, she's...
It has a cloud on it.
Right, and it does, it goes, that's exactly...
It tells me it's a little picture of a cloud when it's, when it's go, so.
She's, she's too young to remember or to have seen Beam Me Up Scotty.
She'll never have known a digital, the dialing modem sound. I will, that was the, that was really the neatest part of the presentation that I saw just recently, was that you can download, you know, so before you leave your school, you've got your iPad. It all goes there. You go home, you can do whatever you want when you walk back in. It all goes back up. That's pretty amazing.
Anything that improves the feedback going back to students, the timeliness of it, and makes it easier on teachers as well as students, I think, is fantastic. So, thank you for bringing this forward. I'm glad it's something that the teachers brought forward to you several years ago, and I certainly support continuing the association with Turn It In.
And thank you, Ms. Gill, for the explanation, because I was a little confused with the chart that was on there. So that was a very good explanation. Now, am I correct that whatever, like, say if I turn something in, and then Sarita turns something in after it, it saves mine and saves hers in there? Or is it that even other teachers can see, or is it, okay?
No. Only you, as the owner of the work, can continue to see it, from what I understand. I have students who moved from other areas of the country that use Turn It In, and they would show me their old, like, they said, "Oopsy, here are my archived work." I can still access classes, my past, the past two years of classes. I can no longer work with them. I can just view them. They're, they're sort of archived there. But, no, I wouldn't be able to retrieve. I have the ability to download and print papers that are in an active class, but in an archived class, I can no longer do that. They just sort of live there. So that if you were to go to college, and I had this happen, I had a student went off to college, their paper was in the system. I had a younger sibling then accidentally.
Accidentally.
Oh, okay. So it shows up as.
I think we pitched the wrong thumb drive today. Let's start over. So really, it is a great tool in teaching synthesis, but it's also a great tool in being this, get the measure of, let's really rethink some of the choices we're making and how we're doing things. And it's not perfect. You still do need the teacher element there to talk students through and to work with them. So it on its own is a tool, but it does facilitate the scoring and students learning about the writing process in a, I think, a faster and, a faster manner and with more clarity.
I think it's a great learning tool, like when you said, that they, they can see what the work they've done and kind of have some more of immediate feedback. Also, I know that all teachers have access to it, but do, I would say, most of the teachers take the, you know, the opportunity to use this? Or some still, you know, really not aware or really how this is used for their benefit and for the students' benefit?
I am working on that.
Okay, then, then we're good. All right.
I'm thinking that a personal mission to, I am working with a few art teachers at Lattontown and saying, "No, no, we can do this. We can scan things in and make it work." And, you know, you can just put classroom activities. It doesn't have to be a grandiose project. It can be the smallest thing to help students work on improving the process of writing and the skill.
Okay, so the word's getting out there.
Yeah, and I will say that the greatest voices behind this are the teachers who have used it, like Colleen, because that word really spreads a lot faster than us saying, "Hey, here's a new product." But if a peer and a colleague says, "This is really working in my classroom," and that is, that is really what has paid off in the last few years.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, so do I have a motion for the software?
I move that the Board of Education approve the software service at a cost of nineteen thousand seven hundred forty-six dollars and forty-two cents per year for the, for three years, for a total of fifty-nine thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents for the contract.
I have a question. Do we need to put the Turn It In software stated on there? I think we need to state that, the Turn It In software.
Okay, I can hit that. I thought of that when I was reading it. Okay, I move that the Board of Education approve the Turn It In software service at a cost of nineteen thousand seven hundred forty-six dollars and forty-two cents per year for three years, for a total of fifty-nine thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents for the contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you. Very good catch.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming to explain that. That gave a really good picture of how it's used.
Thank you.
The, the next item also related to.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. The core reading program for Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School by Dr. Marr.
Yes, thank you. And so this next one, Ms. Molesky, the supervisor of reading language arts, we'll be sharing. But as we have brought forward some additional programs in social studies and Spanish last time, we're looking at the new school. But there's also some great opportunities that we have with this program, so, Ms. Molesky.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I've been tasked with ensuring that the materials for reading language arts are in place for Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary as they open their doors in the fall. And in working through that process, that's purchasing process, that's kind of brought me here tonight to share with you recommendations for their core reading program. First, I wanted to go over a little bit of the history. Back in two thousand five, two thousand six, St. Mary's County Public Schools went through an extended adoption program, or process where the Houghton-Mifflin-Harcourt textbook of the two thousand five edition was placed into all of our schools. It was adopted by our system, and that has been, has been the program ever since that we've been using. When Evergreen came onboard in two thousand and nine, Houghton-Mifflin had done an update. It's like a parallel version of the two thousand five, just a little tweaks. And it was purchased, the two thousand eight edition was purchased for Evergreen. So we have two different ones sitting out there right now. So the question came to be, what do we do when, when Captain, when the new elementary school is opened up, what do we buy? So again, two thousand five, we have the one series. Two thousand eight series is at Evergreen. And so, looking into it, we talked to Mary Moreland, who's going to be the IRT at Captain, at the new school, as well as then Jeff Dorenzo. And I sat down with representatives from Houghton-Mifflin to see what would be the best path to go, because it is our adopted program, but it seems strange to go backwards instead of moving forwards in spending money and purchasing a new, new program. So our options became, we could locate and purchase two thousand five editions to align with all of the schools except for Evergreen. We could locate and purchase the two thousand eight edition to align just with Evergreen, which would allow us a little bit of sharing, but not that much, because not that many redistrictings occurring with Evergreen. Or we could look at purchasing the two thousand fourteen edition, which has been aligned with the Maryland College and Career Ready standards as far as a better instructional tool, really, for our children and for the teacher's use. When you look at the features of the two thousand four edition, I wanted to just kind of share with you, this is a lesson at a glance. The new series is set up in thirty lessons that are all aligned to the clusters that address the standards. So for this particular lesson, you can see the clusters of writing, reading, literature, and informational texts, foundational skills, and then the overarching language, which also integrates the grammar, spelling, and vocabulary, are all part of a week-long lesson that are aligned to an anchor text that's either literary or informational, along with two supporting texts. So they've already done the pairing. All the work that the teachers are doing right now to try to gather those materials and integrate all of the skills that are needed for the standards, they've already taken that workload out for them. So I really have been impressed with the program. So, in thinking this process through, my conclusion, and I hope that you will agree, is that the two thousand fourteen edition provides instructional material aligned to the new standards. We can use it as a pilot to see if we like it for future upgrades for the rest of our system. It has, all of the texts in it have the required text complexity, so the company has already leveled all the text so that it meets the standards required for Common Core. It's fifty-fifty nonfiction and literary text, which is what also Common Core is requiring. They've already paired the passages with common topics. They'll provide professional development for the year, integration of the skills, and the instructional shifts such as close reading, textbook and questions are already written and developed as far as the lesson plans in the series for the teachers. Because the two thousand fourteen edition is in mass production right now, and they look at it because it is our adopted series, it's just, we're just upgrading, we get a twenty-five percent discount, which actually makes it thirty, about approximately thirty-six thousand dollars cheaper than if we were to search out what we would need for the outdated two thousand eight edition. The two thousand five series is out of print, so we probably could not even locate all of what we would need to align it with what everybody else is using, plus instructionally, that doesn't really make sense. So, recommendation for me would be to purchase the two thousand fourteen series. With shipping and handling, it comes to a total cost of seventy-one thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. And so my recommendation for that purchase is to go with that one.
Sarita?
No comments or questions. Thank you.
Mary?
The two thousand fourteen edition is more cost-effective. It aligns with the Common Core, and you can use it as a pilot. So it works for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
You mentioned that the teachers across the system are having to identify these kinds of resources on their own and pull them together for students. In what you've outlined for us, certainly seems like the two thousand fourteen series is more appropriate. Any thought of at least providing additional teacher additions throughout the system for teachers to use as resources so that they can build from there, recognizing that at this point in time, it would be very difficult for us economically to be able to provide the student textbooks, but at least if the teachers have those resources, they can, they can better pull resources together and utilize those lesson plans. Because my fear is that, as we are providing the newest school with the two thousand fourteen series, that because it is directly aligned with the Common Core and the Maryland curriculum, that I, I understand that teachers are doing all they can to make sure that they're pulling those resources, but I, I just have to wonder if those students are going to be at somewhat of a competitive disadvantage as compared to the students who are, who are utilizing the two thousand fourteen series. Any?
Actually, that's, that's a good point. Do you know how much, just out of curiosity, how much is it for a teacher edition book? Do you know offhand or no?
I don't off the top of my head, no. But I'd be happy to spend that money for you.
Well, I, I recognize that it, there's going to be a larger conversation, but I would just at least throw that, that out as a thought to.
Actually, that's, that's a good, that's a good thought. And maybe you could get back with us.
Absolutely.
You know, and that way, they have those resources at their hands too, to be able to.
I think we're looking at about a two hundred and fifty dollar approximate cost for a teacher textbook and kit. So, that's.
Even, even if we did a grade level of, okay, we put that resource in the school, you know, the, so there is a third grade level, a fourth grade level, so that there's a single edition that the teachers can share. But I just think, from what you gave us to look at, that the resources are significantly better than either the two thousand five or the two thousand eight, or two thousand, yeah, two thousand eight series. It, it's a thought.
The majority of our schools are ten years out of, out. It's been ten years since we've adopted a set of texts.
Right.
And I can tell you that we're, we're trying to use this to our advantage. This week, I'm working with kindergarten teachers on updating the curriculum map for kindergarten, and having looked at this material and knowing that it possibly could be coming down the pike. One of the things it does with each of its weekly lesson themes is it gives additional trade books that they would recommend that, that correlate with the topic.
Right.
And so, what the kindergarten, what we did is we went online and found the whole scope and sequence and looked at what those additional books are. We went on and looked them up to see if they matched the themes that we have, because they've already been lexiled and considered as far as the appropriate text complexity, and we are adding those to the map for all St. Mary's County Public Schools so that they know. So the knowledge that we gain from what the company has done with the materials, I think we can begin to incorporate for our other schools as well.
Are there, are there any online resources that come with this? Like, I knew that when we approved the Spanish and the, I guess, the social, what is it, social studies, that there's online for.
There is.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's like a parent and teacher resource component as well that's online.
And thank you so much for providing us the new and the old.
You're welcome.
Textbook, so that we, we had chance, for everybody out there, we had chance to review what is being purchased.
That, that was my only question, just a thought.
Anything else? Anybody? All right. So, can we have a motion for the core reading program for Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School?
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of Houghton-Mifflin-Harcourt Journeys K through five to use as the core reading program for Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School in the amount of seventy-one thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-three cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then just, you know, if later on you could provide us feedback on, just, you know, some of the information on the teachers' kits and what all it includes.
Absolutely. I have a whole proposal, the price breakdown, and again, I'll be happy to move forward with anything that we can get.
We've got to make sure we've got money, but I mean, it's just a thought.
Right, I mean, there's a great deal of enthusiasm in reviewing the contemporary materials that are available for teachers. And, and I think that we, we started a really good conversation with our funding agents about the appropriateness of one-time costs, such as textbook adoptions and, and certainly refreshes, something like this. So, I'm sure that as we talk to our county commissioners, one of the things we can talk about is how wonderful this two thousand fourteen edition is.
It absolutely is, because it lays out everything for the teachers. So a lot of that legwork where they're having to just, you know, do teachers pay teachers and search for passages to pair up? That work has already been done for them.
And that's my concern, is over the last number of years, teachers have been asked to adopt a whole new curriculum, new lesson plans, new testing. And so if there are things that we can do to, to make that workload a bit less or a bit lighter, I, I would like to see us entertain those, however that might be.
We have the triumvirate there of, of, of English and language arts from K to twelve and beyond. And they'll tell you that any investment that you make in resources for classroom teachers is going to be deeply appreciated. So we'll go back and cost that out.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, now we are on with technology education credit, and once again, Dr. Marr and Mr. Boyle. Hi, are you coming up to the podium?
Well, I'm going to come up here in case you have any questions.
All right.
Well, hello again.
Hello.
So, this is really a bit of good news that we received from the State Department of Education two weeks ago. It allows an additional option for earning the technology education credit for students to graduate from high school. Currently, though, what's in regulation at the state is that all students must earn one credit in technology education as Maryland's graduation requirements. That class has traditionally been, for the last fifteen years, the foundations of technology course. We have offered this course in multiple ways to provide different options for students. As a traditional course, three years ago, we started offering it as an online course. We're also building in some blended learning options with that as well. There's also been no course alignment with this course with transfer institutions such as the College of Southern Maryland. So that is the technology education, education credit that MSD has approved. Two weeks ago, we received a letter from Dr. Jack Smith, the chief academic officer for the State Department of Education, that has expanded the options for students to fulfill this technology education credit. Two of those options are. Two of those options are currently in our program of studies. Those courses are Foundations of Computer Science and Computer Science Principles. So now, students will, as of June 12th of this year, will now have the option of taking either Foundations of Technology or Foundations of Computer Science or Computer Science Principles. These courses too, in the last round of the program of studies, you remember that the State Department also approved those courses to be utilized as the fourth year of enrollment for a mathematics course after the students have already met the graduation requirements. There's also a chance that with these computer science courses, that there are aligned courses at the College of Southern Maryland as well. So this now opens up additional options for students to earn that technology credit. So, we are pleased that we're going to be able to offer these options for students. We sent out, as soon as we had this memorandum from the state, we sent out notice to counselors and high school principals and assistant principals to share with students that we're trying to figure out their schedules for next year. So, our next steps are that we're going to be looking at whether, at additional courses. And Mr. Boyle can go on to explain some of the process, but there's a rubric that they provided for us to review additional courses in our program of studies. And if those courses meet the requirements of that rubric and pass the review, they can be also included as the technology education. We're doing the same for our College of Southern Maryland courses too, looking at their programs for the students that do, that are in dual enrollment programs, to see which courses they can take as that dual enrollment course as well. So, this is a great opportunity for our students, a great set of additional options for them as they earn that technology credit for graduation. So, I'd love to hear some questions, if you have any.
Sarita?
No, I'm just, I'm very glad that the state expanded this option in that way. And I'm also interested to see, with these courses, how many students take these versus Foundations of Technology? Thank you.
Miss Lee, did you enjoy your Foundations of Technology course?
Didn't have to take it, because I took engineering.
Engineering as well, okay. Very nice.
Mary? This gives out students additional courses that they can take to meet the retirement requirement, which is great, instead of just having to take that one. And to see what other courses they can take, the ones at CSM, to meet the technology requirement. So this is all good news for the students. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you to Mr. Boyle, because I know there's a lot of hard work that goes on behind the scenes to check the alignment of each one of these courses with the state requirements.
Kathy?
The, do any of the courses that we're going to indicate would meet this or propose to meet this credit, do they have to go to MSD-E to be vetted by MSD-E to determine that MSD-E agrees that our course meets whatever their requirements are?
The two courses that we have there now that...
Mr. Boyle, Mr. Boyle. Mr. Boyle. This is for YouTube, and you know, we have to hear what you have to say. And ultimately, the reason why we're bringing this before the board is that we really do want to make sure that everybody understands that now there are multiple courses that, that will suffice to, for this particular credit. Because there may very well be children who didn't get this word, because they weren't necessarily paying attention the last week of school. And so they, not that, Miss Lee was, I didn't mean that anyway, but when they, when they, when they come back in August and we're rounding out schedules and looking at that, we really do have a lot more options.
Certainly those two that were mentioned here, that they were already vetted. The reason that I would be able to talk to you about any kind of process that it goes through is because I was in the process of creating another option when this came through. And we are piloting a blended piece, actually, in the fall. So, I was already in the process of that, because the first thing we needed is another option, at least one or two other options. And now we may end up with, I don't know, four or five different options before I get done.
So, the memo that came from Dr. Smith indicating expanded options, did that come down in the way of, here are the courses that would, we would agree meet this? Or was it a rubric that said, if courses you're offering have these components, it would then meet the technology education credit?
He said them in both ways. In this case with, there's still a lot of the systems in Maryland that don't have the computer science component, because we've pushed so hard with it in the last couple of years. And next year, we will have, we'll all be IT academies pushing towards the computer science. We're ahead, we're a step ahead of other schools. So, in his memo, he said, if you have these classes already in, which we've already proposed to them and been accepted, if you don't have these, you can adopt ours. Or if you want to create your own, here's your rubric that's going to have to, you're going to have to follow. So, at some point after my pilot, I will probably have to propose, if it's something that really works. I really believe it will work. But I'll have to, I'll have to send that to them for a proposal, for them to actually go through the requirements as well.
Great, thank you. I appreciate the information.
And I don't have any questions for you?
Thank you.
Thank you, good sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we have grading work group update. Once again, Dr. Marr is up on stage there.
And I'm going to ask additional colleagues to come and join me up here as well, because again, this is a collaborative effort. And as they're walking up here, let me just share the, the real work that has been going on over the last couple of months by not only these fine ladies here, but the teachers and administrators and supervisors who have been part of a committee over the last couple of months to take a look at our, our grading regulations. So, what we have done this spring is to bring together groups over the spring to look at our regulations that we have that are associated with our grading practices, to update them with the current and best practices. We do review our regulations periodically. The last time these regulations were revised was five years ago. Since that time, we've had a number of initiatives and things that have come into play that have been institutionalized. One of them is the institutionalization of the Teacher Access Center and Home Access Center. And so we knew that we had to go back to the regulations to take a look at the language, to update it, to reflect the online resources that are available for parents and students as well. In addition, if you remember correctly, about five, six years ago, we looked at how we categorize grading in the system, looking at collapsing several categories that might have been tests, quizzes, homework, projects, et cetera, into two categories, process and product. And so as that has been institutionalized over the last several years, we realized that we did have to look at our regulation and say, well, what is it that's been happening in terms of best practice across our schools? What's been happening in terms of the guidance that we've provided? And how could we bring about some consistency? Oftentimes, when we look at revisions of these, of regulations or practice, or we seek input as we're going through the process. Here, the input came before we formed these groups. We've had feedback from parents and students that they'd really like to make sure that there's consistency in the way that all of these, all of the grading practices are done. And so that was really the impetus for our work as a group. And we wanted to make sure that then, those best practices are what is reflected in the regulations. So, you can see the inclusive group of teachers and administrators, supervisors, instructional resource teachers, and central office staff who have come together. There's about 30 people on this screen. There's also several others outside of the, the active work group who came to the meetings who provided input to those team members. And some of that will be referenced by my colleagues in just a little bit. We've also reached out to the PTA to have their involvement. Now that we've gotten a chance to get some of the ideas brewing, to say, all right, you asked for some consistency, you asked for some clarity, here's some of the ideas that we've done. So we've, we've reached out to that group as well. When you look at the three regulations, there's some pretty good consistency in the categories of how those regulations are laid out, aligned with those associated policies. Each one of those regulations for both elementary, middle, and high have these categories. There's one that defines the grading system, that says that we have As and Bs and Cs, et cetera. There's one that talks about student progress reports and how we report student, things like in terms and grade reports. The process for promotion and retention of students is there. Acceleration in grade placement as well, particularly at the elementary and middle school. The credit system at the high school, it really is that, that acceleration in grade placement. Conferences with parents, it gives guidance for how to provide feedback on an ongoing basis to parents. There's a section on homework, and then there's a section on state-approved correspondence courses, which we now know is not there. It is really state-approved online courses for credit. And so there's some revision that had to happen in that sense as well. So, as we work through this, I'm going to, Ms. Montgomery, who was co-chairing this group, will share how we worked through the process this spring.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about the work that we've done so far. Just to reiterate, Dr. Marr, when he said that this process began because we had feedback from parents and from students that we needed to align some of our processes and procedures. And a few examples, as a high school principal that I would get, parents contacting me about grades that they thought that their students were maybe earning a B in a particular class, but then here we were, right before the end of the marking period, and a ton of grades would get entered. So we're trying to address some of those things. And really, that's specifically the reason and the purpose why this group came together, so we could bring some consistency and have the regulations match what best practices actually were. So, the work group came together. Dr. Marr showed you the very inclusive group that we pulled together to, to work on this. And I, for one, really appreciated being a part of a committee, you know, in the school system that was working on something like this, because it was really great to hear other ideas from the different levels. So we started with that very large group, and on that first night, we broke into each leveled group. So the elementary folks worked together with Susie Fowler as their leader, and the middle school folks worked together with Jill Mills as their leader, and the high school folks worked together with Wendy Zimmerman as their leader. And each group got together and looked at the grading systems, the student progress, recovery, homework, product process, and of course, the high school's looking at online learning. And those groups were looking for some, what the current language said, and then what the best practices were actually in play in each one of their leveled areas. So, those groups shared, and then they, they shared with, as a whole group, so we could look for some commonalities and features that were across elementary, middle, and high school. Then from there, again, using the technology that's available to us, each group, we did not have to meet again until a few weeks ago, because each subgroup got together. They selected dates that they were going to work in their area. And they used Google Docs to communicate with each other and to, you know, put up the current regulation and to give ideas and collaborate using Google Docs. And then, once they came to a consensus about what each level should look like, they shared the Google Docs with the entire committee, with Dr. Marr and myself. And then we were able to look at what was common across elementary, middle, and high school, and pull together another document, and then we shared it with the entire committee. Then we all came back together and talked through, you know, some of the details. And then, from there, we've shared it now with the system. So we want to gain input from teachers across the system, from principals across the system, parents even, you know, just get some information and looking at a Google website so that we can get as much information as possible before we have regulations that we want to bring forward. So, at this point, who's going to share first, elementary, middle, and high? Susie Fowler, elementary.
Good evening. So I'd like to share with you how the middle school committee approached their task. After our first meeting, it became very clear, and I think you've already heard some of this language tonight, but two things became very clear. First, we wanted regulations that not only reflected what was currently happening in our schools, but was also based on best practices. And second, we wanted regulations that offered enough clarification to really provide consistency from classroom to classroom, grade to grade, school to school. So with that in mind, we began looking at our regulations and realized we had a lot to cover. So, we broke into a sub-subgroup, and each subgroup then was assigned a regulation. And within that subgroup, we reviewed the current regulation. We made notes of what was still relevant and what needed to be changed. We talked about what was happening in the school. We did our research, and we found best practices. And we brought all that information back to our middle school group and shared, and then realized we've given ourselves even more information to go over. So at that point, we took a step back and we took it back to our schools. And we individually read each regulation and got feedback from, from some of our staff members with the goal in mind that the next time that we met as a middle school group, we would be prepared to offer some recommendations. So, without going into all the details, I just want to share a little bit about the grading system and some of the big, big discussions we had regarding grading reporting in systems. We talked about grading and the standards. We talked about setting up the grade books by a percentage, 70, 30, and what was relevant. That was where we started, and we had discussions regarding that. And we discussed things like TAC and how assignments should be labeled. And the process and product, we really had a good conversation about how many assignments should take place during the nine weeks. And should the, the product should be tied to a standard. And in recovery, we addressed, what does recovery look like? We had a big conversation about that. Recovery means different things to different folks. So we had a lot of good discussions of what is recovery? And how do we decide what to recover? And then in the promotion and the retention, we really had a great discussion about ways to take a more proactive approach to students who are failing. So those are some examples of the big discussions we had in our committee and some of the language that we recommended, we felt was relevant, that needed to be in the regulations.
The high school group followed much the same model as the middle school group. When we broke into our group, we said, wow, this was, there's a lot to review here. So, we also broke into subgroups. Big difference, I guess, was we then said, okay, we're going to take the technology. And we created our groups and using Google Drive and had a lot of discussion using Google Drive. Then we came back together in our small subgroups, and then eventually back together as our whole group and broke down each of these areas. Each group member also went back to their buildings and discussed what the, the subgroups were discussing. So we had more input, not just everyone's personal opinions. They were talking to all of their group members and members back at their, teachers and faculty at their, their schools. So, with student progress reporting is the, is the area that I'm just talking about briefly this evening. What we wanted to really do was clarify that progress can be reported electronically. That was not in the previous regulations. So we were, we were required to do a lot of paper handing out and printing, where now we would be able to include electronic communication. And we wanted to add more clarification on notification to parents and guardians if a student is failing a course. We realized that we do need communication, even if a student's grade is dropping, if it's from, you know, an A to a B, we still want to communicate with parents. But we wanted to specifically address that if a student is failing a course, that there would be communication with parents or guardians prior to that occurring. And suddenly, there's a report card that has a failing grade on it, and a parent or guardian may not have been aware.
It's kind of interesting, because elementary wanted to meet face to face. And so, I just find it really fascinating. We did not want to be doing this all virtually. So we got together once a week, and because we had more limited membership, because there are more elementary schools, and secondary had representation from each of their schools and we didn't, we developed two Google surveys, one to survey elementary teachers, and this was just grades three through five, for the input about process, product. Things like how you're doing that grading, how many assignments, and that sort of thing. And then the other survey was on homework for teachers of grades one to five. We had 70 responses to the grade three through five, which is a very high response rate. We had 124 responses to grades one to five. And all of that input was considered then as we moved forward. And all of that input was considered then as we move forward. And, and just as a highlight in terms of homework, our committee reviewed research regarding homework. We reviewed the input from the survey. We reviewed the practices of the schools from the members of our group. And then we will be making recommendations regarding amount of time, that the purpose of homework needs to be carefully kept in mind, that how much we're recommending homework will count as part of the overall grade, and that the teacher, the teacher's monitoring of homework. So all in all, I know from, from my perspective and from meeting with the big group, this was a wonderful opportunity to bring a lot of people together to share a variety of perspectives regarding a primary responsibility that we have to provide feedback on student learning to the students and to their families. And it was a really, sometimes brisk discussion, sometimes a little heated, sometimes really fun, but people, a lot of people had the opportunity for input, and I think that all of us believe that when we come back to you in July to report more of the specifics, that we are representing the thoughts of many of the teachers in our system and come from a perspective, as Jeff and Maureen said, that the impetus came from parents and students. So there's a lot of representation that is included in terms of the regulations that we will be recommending.
So our next steps are that, last week, we created a Google site that has all of the recommendations so far that have been drafted by the, by these, these subcommittees in this committee. Those, that website has been pushed out to all staff, so they can read it. There's a place for them to be able to provide comments directly on that site and give to us, so that if we miss something, if we misphrased something, or if something was, could be more clear, then it is open there. Again, as we said, we've, we've put it out there to reach out to the PTA so that we can get their input as well, and we'll be putting it out there more publicly. Once we have some additional feedback from, from staff over these next couple of weeks, we'll be bringing it forward to you in July as, as part of a proposed work session for you, should you want to have that, that information, and hopefully be able to have some updated regulations when we come back in the fall.
I, first and foremost, I want to very much thank all of you for your leadership in this. And to all the teachers who aren't here tonight and hopefully enjoying themselves somewhere, that's, it's really, it's really important work. We, we're not going into this conversation lightly. We, we realize the polarizing impact stepping into grading and saying, this is what we're gonna do, has, because it is, it, it intrudes upon a teacher's autonomy. And the last thing we want to do is mandate or intrude on autonomy, because the creative spirit in the classroom, the inventive and creative way to look at work with the students, that's something we don't ever want to suppress. But we all know that we've had fantastic classes with teachers who, from the very first day, lay out for you the learning in the class, the expectations for learning, the timeline for tasking, and work with you throughout the year. And that class is the best experience you'll ever have, because you know where you stand. And when you get timely feedback through Turn It In, through your English teachers, you quickly understand what's expected of you and how to self-correct and move forward. And, and we all, we, we have teachers who do that incredibly. And we have systems that can communicate this effortlessly. We just need to make sure that we're all using it. So we started with, really, a very blank slate. We just said, hey, this is what's in policy, and this is what's in regulation. Let's talk about what we're really doing. And I have to applaud everybody for the work so far. This is really just an information, before we even give you information. This is information before the work group, but I, but as we concluded this year, when we pushed out all the conversations that we've been having, I didn't want the board to suddenly hear, we're, we're changing grading, and please, we're not changing grade, we're having a discussion about it, and we're, we're listening to the people doing the work, and we're listening to their, their input and recommendations. And ultimately, from it, we know we can make ourselves even better. So, thank you, Dr. Marr.
Sarita.
I have a few questions about the, you were mentioning a few times, the student feedback is, since you were saying now is just information, would later be an appropriate time to ask those questions, or is now?
No, please.
Okay. So, when, like you were saying with the system-wide sharing of input with the use of the Google website, what kind of, and then I was looking at the timeline and how this is being implemented or adopted in the, in the fall? And so if the, if you're looking for student input from now into the fall, I'm not sure that, oh, is this?
They're just deciding which one of them is best suited to answer the question.
I'm not sure that there would, that, within that time period, that you would get a lot of student feedback, just because of student involvement, as well as my own ability to motivate students over the summer, is significantly lower than during the school year. So what is your take on student feedback with this?
My, my take on it is that the student feedback actually was what drove the formation of the committee. The hearing from students throughout the year, not just myself, all principals and Mr. Smith, hearing from students and parents about how things were working. That's, that's actually where the whole idea to take a look at the current policy came from. And it really, it really was generated by students and parents. So their input, everything that we talked about and how we broke into those groups was based on what the students had been telling us was, we had this great system, we have home access center, that, you know, they can have live data all the time. Any parent that wants to be involved and know exactly where their student stands on any given day, they can, if things are updated on a regular basis. So that was the feedback that we were getting from students. And so that was really the impetus behind starting the whole committee.
Okay. So then with the, so students, all this feedback has already been helpful, sounds like, but how much are you looking, how much feedback are you interested in from students as more clarity is, like, brought to the changes and everything?
You mean, you mean their opportunity over the summer to give feedback?
How much do you, would you want from students? How much are you looking for? Or has students already done, done sort of their part in providing feedback?
Well, for the changes to the regulation, we've gotten the student feedback, but that doesn't mean that this is a process that's going to end, you know, we'll start things in August. So really, because some of the things that, that you'll see when we, when we roll out some of the ideas, there are big ideas and things that we don't feel like as a system that maybe we're necessarily ready to start diving into some of the big changes, but maybe some things that we're gonna recommend that we form focus groups during the course of the next school year. So at that point, you know, so, so some of the regulation changes are based on the feedback that we've already received, you know, the things that we're, we're looking at making for the, the recommendations for this upcoming school year. But then along with that, we'll be looking at some things that we can look at long-term over the course of the year where we can get more involvement from students.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. That was a lot of work, I mean, that you did, how you went to the teacher level to talk to them about it, to get input, because they're the ones who actually will be implementing this new process, and the grading system had not been looked at in five years, and everything changes. So you have to relook it and, and make, get input from students and parents, which you did, to come up with a process that's consistent throughout the system. Great work to all of you.
Kathy?
I, I think, sort of piggybacking on what Sarita said, what I took from her comments is really that you, parents and students drove this work, is making sure on the other end of things, that there's some time, there's some opportunity for students and parents to take a look at what came out of those comments and concerns, and ensure that they were accurately heard and that that's all reflected in those regulations. I think that the other piece that's important for people to understand is that the board's role in this is, is writing policy. Regulations are actually the purview of the superintendent. And so while this is all being brought to us for us to have an opportunity to review, it, it truly is the policy that belongs to us, which begs the question, at what point are we as a body going to look at the policies that are directly involved with grading and ensuring that those policies are up to date and reflect appropriately what we as a system, what we as a board want to see?
Right. And if, Dr. Marr, if you'll go to the last slide.
I'm sorry.
Trying to motion it, go to the next slide. The, the work session in July, and we only have one date in July, but we're trying to get a second board day in July, because it's really important. We've got a whole host of things that we really need to talk about, and one of them is this. So at that work session, we would start with, this is the current policy that is under your purview, and here are the elements that we may need to revisit, because they're not necessarily up to date with what we're currently doing, and/or that might need to be modified. So that would be when we'd, we'd start with a conversation about the policy under your purview for your consideration. Then we would go into the regulations as they stand. The regulations as they stand are, do not in any way direct grade books or, or process products or whatever. They spend a great deal of time talking about the concept of homework and how much it should count, but not really much about the actual grading process. The, the purpose of our work is, is, has really been talking about the fact that local and state national assessment has driven the conversation, but the day-to-day world of a child and of a student exists in the classroom and in the grade book. And really, the classroom and the grade book is the vehicle through which we communicate to our parents how our kids are mastering information. And we spend a lot of time focusing over here, when really, we need to be focusing right on the grade book, what's in there, because what are we asking children to do? And how are we asking them to do it? And when are we asking them to do it? And where are we asking them to do it? And that really has been kind of the conversation that, that's been driving a great deal of this. So when we come back in July, we'll start with the policy which you own, and there's, there, you know, there are, there are things that definitely need to be modified, wording mostly. And then there are other elements that, if you so choose, you may wish to have it included into policy. The regulations on the other side, that's what this website, the, the Google site that they've put together, just shows what currently exists in policy, because what we found is, people have no idea what's in policy. Outside of the select few that, that walk around with policy, and in regulation, even fewer people really have an understanding of what's there. So the Google site that, that they've put together is, is really a great tool to get everybody up to speed pre-learning before we get together for our work session in July.
And I think what I really focused on was using best practices to inform, but the, but the word that struck me over and over again was consistency. And if there's one thing I hear from parents and students repeatedly, is the lack of consistency across classrooms, across grade levels, from school to school, and how frustrating that is for parents and for students, because they never know from one moment to the next what exactly they are expected to navigate. And so it's, it's being on the same page in terms of what the expectation is. And I would imagine that you probably will get some pushback from teachers, because I've also heard from teachers, there are some teachers who, who readily love and, and spend a lot of time putting information into hack for students and parents to be able to use. And I've heard from other teachers who think that it is the responsibility of the student to figure out what those assignments are, and not their responsibility as a teacher to provide that beyond in the classroom, saying, here's what the assignment is, here's when it's due, do it. And so I applaud the fact that you are working to achieve consistency through regulation. I want to make sure that our policy also reflects that, at least as far as I'm concerned. And then the other thing I would ask of you, Mr. Smith, is it's been several years since process and product has been implemented and then presented. And I know I, for one, could use a refresher on it, because that's also a topic I hear a lot about, and I'm getting ready to do something in July, and, and it's the, it's the chief time that I hear about process and product. And so, you know, any, any assistance that I can have in order to make sure that I'm providing accurate and timely information would be most appreciated.
And that was, that's been, that has been, that was the conversation in many of the, in many of the groups, really talking about that, that, that element of grading and, and people saying, you know, everybody has an opinion, and you have to value opinions.
Absolutely.
And you have to listen to voices, and at the end, you have to do what's right for kids. So it's all, it's gonna be great. I can't wait till Ju-, I can't wait for July. It's almost here.
Yes, yes, it is.
The year just, the year just flies by.
But, but let me echo Mrs. Washington's words. Thank you very much for undertaking this, and I hope you'll take that back to all the colleagues with whom you've worked to achieve this. It is a, a large undertaking, but it is a very valuable one. So I very much appreciate that you were willing to, to spend the time to make this work. Thank you.
And I echo everybody else, and thank you very much for working together to accomplish something, an issue that students and parents brought forward in order to make the system better. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all for being here. And on that note, the next board meeting will be on Wednesday, July 8th, 2015, at nine, nine AM. Hope to see y'all here. And that concludes our meeting.
Thank you.